It actually should be a privilege, right?
It is, yeah.
Yeah, well, a ship comes out and takes all their ordinance.
All right, Deborah, let me know when you're ready.
Okay, we're on.
So I was waiting for Phil to do the countdown. We're gonna call this meeting to order at 5:30. We'll start with a roll call.
Gina Martinez, District One.
Walter for District Two.
Bill King, District Three.
Councilman Mers is not gonna make it tonight.
Herb Dyer, District Five.
And Darren Schroeder, Mayor. If you will, please stand with me for the pledges of allegiance and remain standing with the American flag.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the civil public which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Councilman King, will you?
I will, thank you.
Great for you.
For the opportunity. Dear God, watch over us, watch over us as a city, watch over us as a county. There are people here in our, in our county that are in need of, of your help. And, and also pray that us neighbors can, can seek out and help when we see situations like that. In the town council, and help God. And I just.
All right, next item, citizens' comments. Please. It's been too long.
Who is this?
My name is Robert Laile, but thirteen fourteen Gentiles. I know you've missed me, so I wanted to come back and talk to you for a few minutes. Like a, like a bad tooth. A couple of things, building maintenance, I came up today to pay my utility bill. And as I was looking at the outside of the building, I noticed that the windows were starting to lose their paint. We have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on this building and other buildings doing maintenance at great expense because we didn't do it when it needed to be done. And that's, that's a waste of money, and I know you all are very concerned about wasting money. The same thing happened at the Steinbach House, over and over, stuff rotted out, we could have taken care of it, but we didn't. And so I'm gonna go on record to say, the windows and the doors, the paint's coming off. If you don't fix them, they'll go so far that we'll spend another fifty to hundred thousand dollars, waste of money. I looked at the, at the master plan that was put out, and I would say that it is extremely well done, it's a great coffee table book. How much actionable material in there is questionable. And it looks very much like four other master plans we had and studies by some other universities and parts. But as far as concrete things that point to what we can do, I didn't see very much in there. I mean, fix the streets, okay, well, we knew that. And do some of these other things, maintain, we knew all that. But to tear out Highway ninety, put in parallel streets and build holding structures along there, fanciful thinking if I ever saw it. It looks nice, I mean, it's really well put together and a lot of good words, but, but I did get three things out of it. It, from the people's inputs, must maintain stability in the heart of Castroville, stability. Citizens said no erosion of current physical patterns, okay? Transition zones protect the integrity of the neighborhoods or residential, the existing areas. And who comes along? I would expect that those areas that are being talked about, they're not encroached on with new zoning that lets things happen in those areas that was never intended. Because I think the public has spoken very plainly, they spoke very plainly in here when we were looking at Ms. Romano's property and the, and the Tardy Hotel. Don't mess with this. And so if the UDO messes with that and lets things be that wouldn't normally have been there, then that's good. And there's no rush to pass that, you know, middle of the next year should be fine, there is no rush. I'm concerned about the water situation, just as you are. And there's more and more people in our extended ETJ probably would like to be in the city. We're gonna get in a real jam here if we try to take all that stuff. You might start thinking about working in agreement with SAWs, because they have three or four water sources, we have one. And the way that you're looking at on this end of town for all those people depending on the aquifer, it isn't good. And so I don't know how you can expect to handle a lot more development without living at forty-five percent cutback endlessly, but I think we need to really look at not taking in all those people that might want part of Castroville necessarily and, and say, you know, go with SAWs, a good job here. I submitted a Freedom of Independence Act request for documentation specifically designating the areas in the city that are historic, not a map with colors on it like that, no. The ordinance and the documentation would attach to it that says this street, this block, this street, this block. I'd like to see that, because we're already, we're already asking people to believe that map true, I don't believe that map is true. That map wasn't there fifteen years ago. And so I've submitted that request and the city's working on it. Thanks for serving, it's wonderful, lovely work, we need to enjoy that, thank you.
Great, thanks. Please. Please just state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Blake Caesar, address is five oh nine Jack Nicholas, Divine, Texas. And I appreciate Mayor you and the council allowing me a few minutes to speak to you. I'm here, I am with the company called STRD, South Texas Refuge and Disposal. And I just come to the council and I know that your garbage contract is coming up. And tell you a little bit about the PRD. About fifteen, fifteen years ago by a gentleman from Hondo named Freddie. Years Freddie's done a good job of growing the company, we currently serve customers out in Medina County. We have the collect stations, one right here outside of Castroville. And I became partners with Freddie about three years ago. And I was here in Castroville, I've lived in Medina County. I used to live out on forty-five sixteen. And ran, started another garbage company out here. Unfortunately, it got sold to one of the corporations and I stayed with them a few years, but they went against my beliefs. And so Fred partnered up approximately about three years ago. And we currently service Hondo, Natalia, Sabanau, and just started Somerset a few weeks ago. We base our company on our communities. Off with them. And every mayor and councilperson in any town I have has my phone number, my mobile. And most of the calls are eleven o'clock at night, but I answer it all the time. And I guess I'm getting old because I still believe in a company being a partner with the city. And providing not just a vendor, but a partner. And I hope y'all will check out the cities I spoke of and see how we are partners with them. And we get involved in the community, in the schools, in the special projects. Of course, we've done some in Castroville, I think, but certain celebrations y'all have, we're a partner with that. You know, we continue to grow, but we don't want to be too big, we want to take care of our customers. And we want to strive in Medina County. And I've previously had Divine and all the communities in Medina County other than the cost. But it just to us that we're very interested in y'all's upcoming contract. Very interested in providing the services y'all need. I know that over the years, I've seen a lot of brushout on the side of roads. Program with Hondo. That we pick all the brushup within seventy-two. All you do is call my office and get on the list, somebody will be out and provide service to be. And you call, you talk to somebody local. You don't have to call and talk to somebody in North Carolina or some zone, you get one-on-one service. And I think that's the best benefit to our company. And I hope to speak to develop, develop relationships, and I appreciate y'all's time tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for citizens' comments?
Arnold Delacy, one oh nine River Bluff, two things real quickly. The group that oversees tour de Castroville has started up already. We're hearing the time goes forward. The thing from yesterday and today, there were approximately two dozen veterans that got flown green flights out at the airport. Three of them were actual couples, a husband and wife, both retirees, another one was brothers that were retirees. And we had anybody from ninety-four down to about probably like sixty-eight years old, they all had a great time, the weather was great. And all of them for being there.
Great.
For letting us know.
Thanks, Arnie. Would anybody else speak for citizens' comments?
Hi, my name is Joe Holshaus, six oh two Berlin Street. And I'd like to talk about agenda item number nine concerning the utility vehicles. I just want to ask y'all to please allow golf carts in the city as allowed by the Texas Transportation Code five five one A. I know I sat in many meetings with you guys and you said that you're a fair and equitable council and ask that you guys do this with this agenda item, take the same approach. Be touch for, I'm gearing it up right now for my livestock, family livestock operation. Also, I do take the downtown events, it's fun, to Weedy, you know, a couple of blocks away to take over what grows, property along with my mother's yard. And I run the, it's a lot easier to use a UTV than load everything up in that F three fifty. So, and it uses a lot less fuel, too. But anyway, I the UTV, same as a motorcycle, you know, have the slope moving and Lamona along with the license, it's registered with the state of Texas.
Thank you. All right. Next item is the consent agenda on the October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four regular call meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
No move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All of those?
I wasn't here.
Thank you. Our next item is proclamation recognizing Gabrielle Flores, senior at Medina Valley for construction of window boxes at Steinbach House.
I went out to the school, I did all of the wood. He'll talk about her doing all of the work. And they've really turned out beautiful, we're getting ready to get them painted.
Howdy, my name is Steven, I'm the construction teacher at Medina Valley. They reached out to me if they needed it done. I went over there, they got a sample, took one back. We provided the wood that we just had there, it didn't cost very much for us to do. And I had excited. And I know that Gabriella, that's a very good, she does woodworking, also does carpentry. She can swing a good hammer and nail a nail. So we did it, I kinda helped her a little in doing some of the cut, she did the more of the fine stuff, putting everything assembled together. And I want to present Gabrielle Flores, she's a senior, Foster Skills USA. I kinda found out what she wanted to do about, about a week ago, that she wants to go to Texas Tech and do, kind of felt a little thing on her, like I'm doing something. So Gabrielle Flores is right here. See what, what does this, she did.
So I'm gonna come down in just a second, but before I do, I want to just thank you for doing this. I mean, this is great partnership with the school, Priscilla, thank you for reaching out. And it's really nice to see, not just going out and hiring somebody out to do it, but to incorporate this in as a learning experience for you. Some, a great gift that you give to the city, I think it's just, they're beautiful, you've done a great job, I'd like to get some for my house, I'll talk to you about that after. But is she telling you to jack up the price for me? Thank you. All right, so in recognition, actually, would you like to? Did you, would you like to say something before I?
Smart girl, smart girl.
So I, I'll be down there in just a moment to present you with this, I have a proclamation for you. Whereas the Steinbach House, formerly owned by the Steinbach family, is a historic building owned by the city of Castroville. And whereas the Steinbach House was for originally, sorry, it's, it's the Haas or the Hus, I'm not really sure.
I hate you.
Yes. Was originally built in Wolbach, France between sixteen eighteen and sixteen forty-eight, and lived until nineteen eighty-eight. And whereas centuries after it was built, it was gifted to the city of Castroville by the association Jardin de Ressines, the Garden of Roots Association. And I butchered their name, I apologize for that. Who managed a four-year relocation and restoration project for the house, which was undertaken and carried out by faculty and students of the Lycée Agricole, Agricultural College from Roufak in the Haut-Rien Department of Alsace, France. And whereas the city of Castroville maintains and opens the house up to visitors to the area. And where Ms. Gabrielle Flores is a senior at Medina Valley High School and president of Construction Skills USA. And where Ms. Flores volunteered her time and talent for the construction of replacement window boxes at the Steinbach House. And whereas this volunteer effort and donation by Ms. Flores benefits the city of Castroville and enriches the visits to the property by the citizens of Castroville and visitors to our city. And whereas this volunteerism by Ms. Flores encourages other individuals to volunteer their talents to the benefit of the city of Castroville and Medina County. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Darren Schroeder, Mayor of Castroville, hereby proclaim Ms. Gabrielle Flores a beneficial citizen of the city of Castroville, Texas, and extend our heartfelt appreciation for her.
The mayor's coming, so. Yeah, I know, bunny ears, you know, that kind of.
Darren, don't you want to pick up the box and hold it?
Oh, yes.
First hold of the proclamation.
Here comes Joe.
One of the things, also she kind of got her way, we're gonna build a third one, they're at the silos. And she feels very good for the city of Texas.
Awesome.
It's a big project.
Oh, yeah.
That's nice, my friend, I've been there, done that.
Let's get on the resume.
All right, next item is board liaison reports. We'll start with the Airport Advisory Board on November seventh, Councilwoman Martinez.
I didn't make it because my truck battery died and so was yeah, yeah, I was stuck.
Next is the Historic Landmark Commission, meeting isn't until November nineteenth, we don't have anything additional from there, right?
I can make up something.
Oh, that's all right. Well, you do anyway. Library Advisory Board meeting is not until November fourteenth, I think we're doing a lot of these, yeah.
This is a little early for some level.
That's right, we normally do these on the second one, but because we're not meeting on the second one. Okay, so basically none. Next item is executive session pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code, Section five five one dot zero seven one entitled Consultation with Attorney to consult with the legal counsel on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas conflicts with the Open Records Meeting Act. Two, legal options related to certain nuisance and land use enforcement matters. Consultation related to legal options for the regulation of utility vehicles. And two, Texas Government Code, Section five five one dot zero eight five entitled deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. The city council may convene in executive session to receive advice from legal counsel regarding the following, and that is the Alsatian Oaks land use development. We're gonna go into executive session at five fifty.
The livestream is still on.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
What?
You saying, can we entertain? Yes, you can do.
I can carry them.
Can you fire them?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, all right. Say one day?
Yes.
I'm gonna take this back off my truck. Okay, go home, we're gonna come here.
I'm good, one piece, thank you.
Well. Maybe. Maybe yes. I don't know, can you? You should. You're gonna get it? Don't rob it, she meant she wouldn't get it.
You work for the city? Oh, I'm sorry, okay, engineer from. You guys are engineers here at Downriver Downstation, folks?
Yes, I think you are.
I see, I see, I don't know, but I see the sign.
Yeah.
I don't know, were they talking about that? It's interesting that they're talking about that. I was only saying. I thought I was making a comment, okay? I was a little worried, so I could, yeah, I worked at the hundred dollars. I, I've been logged since sixteen and a half, so, been logged on time, but the bill is progress, you saw. So, but anyway. One of the things that I ask, because I went east of here, kinda especially because, I'm sorry, it was. We, we, I think a hundred minutes, so we are. But I asked him before, for example, that one really, you know, have they met their milestones, measureables, it's in, in development, everything. I see when you wrote it down, did you hurt certain progress? Have they met those five, five requirements, and why? And so, for example, the, the highway entrance, that's the basic.
It's the present.
Yeah. Um, I, I'm also an old school guy and I understand the government's. Give her a, kinda, and everything is out and work to the end. But also they, for starters, okay, who did the final plan about that entrance? That's, that's old school now, because, uh, you, a preliminary fact usually ticket.
Right.
To go, to go forward.
Yeah.
So, it gets a lot into that final. And final doesn't come until everything's done. So, uh, as a, as a, and that's a question that I, I think, you know, that's a question that I always had. Now, I understand certain things, but who got the ball? Um, I, I, I'm just making a guess.
Cause I, I know the PM that worked there.
Yeah.
And he is currently sitting in Arkansas.
Well, but I also know Tex, I'm just making this point. Cause I deal with it more often. For years, for years, Tex, uh, in, when he had, we dealt with the area engineers and, and Hondo. And pretty much, San Antonio's rubber stamp, district office rubber stamp, what we run down here. So, we didn't have a whole lot of pushback on Tex. Well, over the last several years, development, uh, Tex has, has, has forced their San Antonio standards into the county, which is become more, more stringent, yes. So, it, so, um, you know, the, the, it used to drop these spaces for the road spaces. And I look at that and think, that was a major issue, I wasn't that lucked out.
Yeah.
That's just a personal thing, I'm good.
I, I was, I go in today, and I, I don't, like, I, I did design that one.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, I, I did the PM a favor and introduced us at the.
Sure.
And so, I drove over there and I'm like, that's curious, cause this house is all moving one and two.
Yes, yes.
And this entrance still isn't done.
Yes.
And I'm going.
It's not what you're accustomed to.
No.
No, no, that's, I mean, it's not being ugly, I'm just saying, it doesn't follow what is the norm. The, the norm on a development process.
So I'm, I'm here, I'm gonna ask a question on Monday.
Yeah, yeah.
Walmart, yeah, so.
I'm into this one.
Yeah, just like, we're, how, why is it even done? Or just, just to poke the question, cause I don't have a stake in it.
Right.
I did them a favor, but, I mean, already did on that job with Smell. It was way out of the bag.
So the story is basically, and it's a lot, I'm sure. Walmart, like other big boxes, everybody wants them, so he did a little bit more to them. So when they built their, their, right, they're going back. Okay.
There's a silence.
But here come Tex, Tex said on his own, says now, the Walmart lights too close, he shouldn't build that one, so it's kind of beautiful. And when Walmart comes out of the city, well, so really that one, right, we're saying back in the seventies, you know. And from what I understand, the one there, of course, anyone, it's gonna be a right turn over, they won't allow them to cross a highway. Right turn over, so they'll have to, the Walmart, like, and we use them. That's my understanding of, of, what, what Tex is, is holding around. I don't know.
No, I'm curious now.
It, it, it's a very curious thing, cause it's very, it's very, uh, let, let, like, it's, it's distracting, cause the people wanna see a beautiful dome. And then it's just, how come they never put the roof?
The roof.
And, and, you know, it's kind of like.
So that.
So it's just.
When they started the project, when the first two or three units were in development, or were in construction, I was on the development side.
Okay.
So that's why I would be second to that.
Sure.
I s, I have since switched over to our utilities and infrastructure. So now I'm here in the orbit, I'm here, so I, I don't know, I don't deal with them.
It's just, it's just a curious question that always comes up. What's the status?
You'll see me next time, cause I'm, I'm coming.
What's, what's the status? I'm, I'm okay, it's just, I'm just, we just ask the same questions and we look at different stuff. Um, I am a dinner, I'm, I'm. Generally critical or non-trusting or public, uh, pundits, because, uh, I was, again, when I was here, that, our development. At least we didn't have a, we all, cause it was the position in the city, that we have all the rules and the developers not wanting to follow the rules and then go on there and go to somebody else's. So the, so there wasn't a lot of give and take on development. Um, laws have changed, things like that, which, which more towards that, but, uh, it's, uh, you know, they don't do some changes right now, they're really doing it. Only things like, tell the board, it's, uh, council, I said, y'all have to stop thinking, uh, wow, this is the high school. You have to give a developer's mentality to write your rules, because they develop. And I'm not saying, I, 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 you, we all do, some are right, some are not. But you have to think like that, because the developers are first. The, the first thing they're gonna do is come into town, they're gonna, they're gonna rule, and they're gonna find what benefits them if they want this type of development. So they'll, and, and, they do this for, they will find, you can't fix everything, but they will find the weak parts and they will adjust those to, you know, to the other thing. It's, uh, it's, it pisses. So, don't, don't, don't be excited, don't pull, pull the plug on the first thing. Then you, uh, it's just, uh, whatever, uh, but it is working this year. Uh, so I'm not a big fan of. I, I mean, there's a place one, I'm a guy, but, but I made a, I don't need to hear the negative comment, but the person we talked to.
The one that, that time of day, who?
The, the first one is called, the, the, and when he, he breakfasted about, and the temple was, and, and, for a long time, he, then, then, it's probably next to him, there's six empty lots, all this property down, stand alone in the middle. And the developer, he, we, we, ten houses, well, we have historically, there was one house. And the people, so they said, no. And the director of the ordinances, they were very protective, leave the historic, say, her alone. Do those nice, high against elements out in the new yard, but leave the historical, say, alone. And that's, that's a lot of stuff sometimes.
No, it was wanting money.
Of, of course.
More housing, more money.
Of course, of course. And, and so, but, so that's an issue we're trying to do with the council, the council, we're, that, I've been trying to balance it. The very good phrase, which now I like to use, better. You said any changes, by way of social contract, it would be all good, but we have, we built our homes, we said, so I have something, so set the rules. But listen to us, over the new capacity. It is, same, I can talk all day, I'm sorry.
So you said you were the, was that the project?
I am the, it's a protect, I am the, I am.
The guy.
I'm the guy. I'm the guy. I'm the guy that tells engineers, I'm not gonna give you stuff, tell you five percent. This is me, this is me. I'm in.
I, uh, so I said, sure.
Oh, yeah, good, yes.
So I'm here.
And you, I don't know you.
No, no, not me.
Actually, okay.
Um, this is a market for us, so we're, like, for, for, not the buildings, but for the, so, um, depend on what they, what can the market like me to, see if we can, if there's something that we can do.
Sure, sure. I, I, I'll, I'll tell you this right up front. My service area, just to the west, Castroville, Castroville, the cost, Bible, the cabinet, the line, half the, the southeast quarter, the river. I've been, so, you can get the, I don't do this again with engineering, I know very well, this is weird. We don't share location of our water lines or the size of our water lines, anyway. Unless they're for service, and we turn on the engineer, we turn to, like, we just get service, in other words. As people say, if you tell me the size of water line, I'm proposing it down, tell me the hand it down. Well, I can, but then I can't tell you. Tell me what your needs are, come here, so I can tell you, because what I'm gonna tell you is this, I'm gonna tell you based on the cat now, the property within the CCM, and you get service, you follow my rules. Okay? I want to hear any word, it was off the top of my head.
I heard you talk last night.
And anyway, the, uh, the, I told them on test, I'm the water engineer. And the one here, you get service area, and the two here, you're plus the service, thirty here, you meet your requirements, your, your requirements, these are two of these areas. So, I, I'm giving them the, that is, there's a list. I can be confidential, whatever, but tell me what your needs are, and I can tell you what I, well, you can't, and you can't do that. But if you just want to know, if, if you just tell me, well, I'm looking at this piece of property and you serve it. I'm gonna let you back and say, the property, do the, or the CC there, you can say that.
That's all you're gonna get.
And, and this will provide service, uh, as long as the rules of service are compliant. And you have an accounting, when somebody goes to a factory, they have an accounting. I get, to get a preliminary plan, I will give you whatever, say, if you're in my CCM and you can get service, if you apply the rules. That would be your preliminary plan. You wanna follow plan from me?
Follow us.
Follow us. That's issue a non-standard service agreement, so we have commitments. And then I'll go, well, I don't wanna do that. And the county works really good with this one. So, I mean, I'm ready to please. Yeah, you have anything you need to do, yeah, that's the one we talked in, right on that card. And I just tell you what you're gonna tell me.
I think there may or may not be, yeah, an NDA project.
I think there is, I think there is.
In the area.
Oh, thirteen forty-three in the river.
I, I don't, I.
I don't know, I don't know, I can't say.
I'm, I'm not on the project.
I can say, because I'm not a very NDA with any, but.
Same, like, I am not, I'm aware of.
I, I'm aware of a few hundred acres that somebody's working on.
I, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm aware of a project, and maybe not even using a project.
Well, I'm aware of a project, in my area, a few hundred acres, I know the name of the company, because that's somebody that's, I, very many emails, and then they get the same email, someone said, do you wanna know more information? Then, make an application, so it was give me the basics, and so it's a hurdle, and you do a digital report, and we're done.
So my partner in crime, my, my writer, that, that, I work with, should come to me today.
That is just, yeah. She's with, uh, the, 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 uh, she does, she's not on a project, but that particular point, I, I pointed to you down towards that way of potential development of seven hundred acres.
Yeah, but.
Because their company's engineering.
Oh, God.
I am not on the project.
So I handed my business card, and I said, I'm, I have something to give you, any information? I put our guy.
But I'm not on it.
And I'm, I'm gonna tell you, um, you're in my CCM.
So give me some secrets. What's going on?
I don't know anything. Uh, no, I don't know anything.
Oh.
I know someone that is on that project.
Yeah.
But I don't know.
Is that, is that, is that what you talked to the guy?
I, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna make him regret I communicated it.
Really talk to the guy?
My writer guy, my.
You see, maybe you're on the wrong way.
Yeah, he's, he's like my work husband, he, he. Remember, you're gonna come through yesterday, and he's like, I don't know if I can, I, all right, fine, you do you.
You're living in San Antonio, or?
Oh, that, that, you're gonna talk to the guy down there, the guy that worked here, you forget.
And you pointed out verbally, I, because our ranch is in, you know, that place there.
Oh, that, yeah.
Yeah. I didn't even, I was either.
Well, I'm not a very NDA with my, but I don't believe.
Oh, you don't know that.
I don't, I'm.
I thought you, I thought you, I thought you couldn't, so you don't.
No, I, I, I know the most, the most I knows the name in the area.
Yeah.
Which is about all that I have right now.
We go around that road, we cross the road back in our ranch, we go about thirty-four miles, I don't know, I don't get it, right? So we go by there all the time.
Joe, my, oh, yeah, did you?
Funny, so is this, who's driving now, is he like the, would he?
No.
Can he leave you on the car?
He might be, but I, I don't know.
Oh.
I know, I know, preliminary work and all this other stuff there, you know.
Like core samples, engineering, that'd be core sample.
Oh, gosh, he's saying, what can I talk to? He should have, he should have been there.
That's awesome.
He's the guy, he's the idiot. No, I'm sorry. Well, we had a guy come take water down, he didn't trust us.
Water samples?
We gave them all, we.
From your?
Well, we gave them all the stuff on, chemical analysis, there's every part, and it's gonna be more chemical analysis.
See, see, I went to that, it's funny, I mentioned that ranch, cause I went to that ranch about, it was a dump about, three weeks ago.
She didn't say where it's at.
I don't know where it's at.
Oh.
I went to, I went to.
Legitimately, honestly, I, I, I have a general area, that's about it.
It's a little bit sad.
The people that own it, a friend of mine, no, and they were having a dump on, and I think there's something like fifteen hundred acres of tow, they own. And he, I went, cause I had barbecue, so how about you?
The boy's holding it out.
Yeah. Apparently he's a, he's a real estate guy, and he's coming from a real estate guy.
I don't, he's, he's an engineer.
And, and, huh? Yeah, that's funny, small world, right?
Yeah.
That's what it is.
We were talking about the, uh, obsession, of course.
Is that one, that's one of them?
Yeah, and, and the, and the entrance, entrance.
Oh, yes.
The entrance. We were talking about different stuff, I think, and, and, and.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, okay, I.
Off to the.
I was like, one, the.
No, no, we know that you have it down.
It was not me, like, so I know.
Yeah.
So I have talked to a lot, the person that was on, with that. I don't wanna go there in general.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't.
One of those everybody.
Yeah, we don't really get along at all.
Okay, got you.
Yes.
I have those that work too.
But when she was on the term, he would ask me, hey, can we do a site with it, we will do this, we will check that. So I've been in the area, right, and so I was.
That's kinda cool, though, if you, neat job.
It's a patrol, I was driving in, and I looked over, and I didn't notice it last time, I guess I wasn't paying attention. I looked over and then saw the driver, I suppose, and I was like, that's odd. Like, it's a pretty monument, everything, you know, and then it's a little, I'm like.
Right, to the pole, right, the same way.
And, yeah, so I uh, I'm gonna ask tomorrow.
That's a big joke here, when you're coming, especially if you're coming the other way, because uh, a lot of times people go to H B live and stuff, the, and the schools out that way and stuff, so it's a big joke. Looking at that, and that pole guard, you know, that's likely from, from one of the.
Yeah, you gotta do that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Money you're wrong, you didn't do it.
So he responded.
What did he say?
I said, this, I think this is someone you might need to get to know.
This is my partner.
Okay.
Yeah. See, we're.
Ah, I've spoken to Bruce before.
No way! You gotta tell Bruce, he's in, I think the restaurant. Yeah, that's funny. Yeah, Bruce, Bruce is on the time, he's on for here.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So, so your friend Jim?
The who?
Welch.
Jim Welch.
He was my PM back in the day.
Jim Welch is the chairman of the planning zoning commission.
Oh, really? Where he was chairman?
I started home and planning zoning commission.
Yeah, he's it.
He's the chairman?
Can we, what's my boss back when I was PM?
Oh, wow.
And that's what he, that's what he does from her.
What's the name of their, of their partner?
Hey Dawson.
It Dawson.
And then he down, he does.
I, I, yeah, I don't kill the horn, kill the.
Is that where Dawson is?
No.
Or is that?
I don't know, no, I don't know, I don't think so. But Jim Welch is, uh, he's San Francisco.
Oh, I saw them at a speech you, one time, a benefit up here at the student club, and they're speaking.
And Jim, I.
I saw that whole, that whole.
He uh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Stuff that's super needed in the world, everyone's an acronym.
Oh, is it?
Yes, there's me, Rick, Rick Page, Rick Page A.
Yeah.
Luke Page A.
What is it? Oh, I heard you.
But yeah, it's in the second name, I'm saying.
That's what it is, that's what I see it, I'm sure.
My, my engineer is, uh, respect, Russell Presine.
Okay.
You know Russell Presine?
Yeah.
Russell does so much for the city and the. But he, he lives right out here, last capital, so he's, he's my customer, so I work for him, he's my engineer, so he looks.
Share them out, share them out.
Russell, Russell, I don't.
They made her part, you meant it.
Okay.
I do, I really do, I do.
That's how it works.
So apparently, you have talked to my writer today.
I have.
Yes.
He said, yeah.
Cause I sent him a picture of the card, and I said, I think this is someone you might need to get to know. And he just sounded, ah, I've spoken to Bruce before, important contact for water.
And and if you don't have water, you're not.
Okay, well, okay, well, then you know. Yeah, he probably tell you stories, he's gonna be able to tell us anything. You know, the, the, I will tell you this, that, you know, you got this one. My field manager, Ronnie Evans, they talked with me, they said, because we wouldn't. We follow the process, so evidently, somebody would help us, say, ground penetrating, they're gonna, they're gonna locate everything, subs. Okay? And the last time Ronnie said, yeah, we showed that there's like a progress water in this, where is where? Okay, no, my husband's saying, but he's way off that.
No progress water?
Maxwell, okay, Maxwell.
Didn't say, but it is, way off that.
Was the ground penetrating?
Well, Ronnie kind of telling him, uh, that they'd be wrong, he should well, there's something big there. How often?
That's funny. So how long you been with?
I've been with myself.
Oh, you've been for a while, how long were you with the?
The, I was an engineer, so I always count the engineer, if you don't count the engineer, I was there eighteen, two years.
Three years, oh.
Yeah, with the internship, I was there fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen.
Been doing it a while, then.
Yeah.
What, what do you say?
So I was like.
Is 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 your brother guy, is Mario, Mario?
Ed.
Ed.
It's Ed.
Got it.
Yeah, and Mario is my, one of, one of my many P M's.
Got it.
Oh, that's the project.
Yeah, so, oh, one of the, I don't, I don't know how that works, they, cause they're teaming with other, like, departments.
Everybody.
One is on roadway, one's for infrastructure, like water, sewer, all that.
Oh, they also, they're.
Yeah.
Got it.
So Ed.
But he said, I fully understand.
Yeah, so Ed is my, is my person.
Okay.
That's cool. For a small world.
But yeah, so like my, so I have nausea for that, for that.
Okay, got it.
Altitude posts, and I have nausea for that.
Like for that, you're just, you're a observer.
I, I'm literally just trying to break during market.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
Oh, one of the, I'm kind of, it's in the middle of the place, so.
It's, it's okay, I mean, it's okay, right, it's, it's, it's a, it's a small world, um, I think Castro has done some with the. KSA, this is the region, you know, okay.
Oh, the, K S A?
KSA, um, and then.
K F A.
And then Russell's done some stuff on water improvement, uh, I think. Kate said, I can hear anything, that's the senior, I don't know, I don't know.
Who's gonna see that floating around the house?
Yeah, it's like, really wants.
It wants me.
It wants you.
It wants.
Don't want you to think that.
No, just back up ahead, and then.
Okay, sure.
For.
And Russell, with respect, any opposites, really, after next, so.
Okay.
That's where they're off. And Russell Presine, you know, respect, it's, their headquarter, the company is actually out. Grand Rapids, Long Island.
Oh, wow.
He's the.
They're national?
Yes, they're national, and Russell's here, he's the senior VP of water, so he's all over the country, he has two hundred engineers there, one of them, one of them. He just, they're so. I'm easy, I'm easy. I'm a long person. I'm talking about these, this kind of work.
Oh, that's it.
That's great, you said, that's funny.
Well, I know, I, when I first went to the university, there was an engineer that worked, and. First things, he started to go, and he's, and stuff, the dual, and well, the best, and stuff. And I looked at him, I said, you know that's wrong. I said, look, I, I, I'm not, I don't have a degree in engineering, but I've got a water operator for us, this is forty-two years, so I've been doing. I'm, I'm thinking this is wrong.
Oh, no, I understand.
Engineer, engineer, Russell, funny, though.
There are.
Don't say that, but it's the people in here that have managed it work.
Yeah, there are people, you don't know, that need, don't need it.
So you have to have relations, so I'm looking at him, I said, you know, you know, that's not right, you're stealing that. This is what we're gonna do, and I said, I want you to do your job. I want you to do that, and, and I want you to stand up and say, Bruce, you're wrong, this is engineering. You put your steel on, you put your life on, I want, he says, I said, why do you do that? Well, because that's the way my uncle wanted me to do it, he's not comfortable, he's jumping for me. And I said, you know what, why don't you go off and work with the dog, I'm gonna be the captain, because I don't need it, I want an engineer that is not afraid to tell me. This is the way we is, this is it, uh, and then we work it out, okay? I understand, I get what they have to say, I understand, the owner has to find a set. But in doing that, you have, you don't give in, so you give in to a point, but you, when you seal something.
Area, it's in.
That, and you seal it, it's there, and then it's up to your, the client that choose to ignore that, because you done it, you don't.
Right, and I have a whole line.
But don't short circuit it, just because I say you're it. That's not what I want, so I, I, I've said that before to engineers, well, engineers. Engineer, and it's like, engineers and interns, that uh, that uh. Just, just do the right thing, and then, and then your body stays on what's right, and then decide what is. Not in time, not in time, it's a hundred year old, it's a. It is what it is, you know, where do you, where do you get that from?
Power.
Yeah, can you build in this line?
Yeah.
Anyhow. Anyhow.
Yeah.
What? So there's still a box, so, who's it, who's on it? So. So.
That was a full box. That was a full box, yeah.
Um. And how long you been an engineer? I'm sorry, I didn't.
Lessons?
I didn't even say nothing.
No, no, you're fine, uh, lessons, and lessons since twenty twenty-one.
Oh, cool, what's your first?
The first one, the second one.
Okay.
First time I was A now, within electronics degree.
Okay.
And then I went to E T S A for a second.
Class of, did you refer again?
Yes, uh, class of twelve, technically.
What?
Right wing.
My, my, my son, my son is class of eleven, he has a profession, spot.
Okay.
Who did the nice business school. And he told me, he said, he had a consumer journey class, the degree he has, technical business. And then he wrote that, so he, I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine.
That's cool.
I don't think.
That's not a, that's not an easy one, yeah.
My, my, my nephew is, who knows?
Yeah.
My, my nephew's a city, and, but, but, you know, you know, what a car. So that's your engineer, so, let's move.
Yeah, so my dad worked in the sector for Texas, or, or gosh, I, he started when I was born. But he retired when I was. At college.
Out of, out of the, this is kind of kind of this?
No, 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 no.
Okay, no doubt. My field manager, Ronnie Evans, he's been thirty-two years out of high school, thirty-two years test, I've been part of test, and then three and six years here. He was the management in San.
On San Jose?
San Jose District. So, yeah, that's, that's one little, that's one little. Kid went, I'm sitting around on text, I'm, I'm a lot of folks.
My dad worked in the maintenance yard, he started there, and then worked at the lab.
Uh huh.
And then ended up in the side there.
Cool.
And then retired in the side there, and now works just off, like a private, true, yeah, my dad.
Yeah, I, I thought it was.
So, and I, um, never forget, I was four. My dad blacked at the time, he's put pencils coloring the lines, all the, all the, all the, and it's four, I want his card, it's on the line.
Oh, man.
I want a coloring book, it's on the line. And.
That's not his assholes.
Well.
I haven't seen this comment.
So I told him, bang it like, oh, and he was like, well, you can, I don't know what he said, I'm like, I want to do, he said, no, you don't want to do that, you don't do my box.
Yes.
It's, you want to be an engineer?
Yes.
I'm like, really, it's like. Yeah, and, uh, and.
What's wrong with those?
And I, I started in civil, but college, and I didn't make it very well, so. I ended up with another Travis degree, engineering, I was used to engineering, so I ended up in my college. And then I'm here, because I refuse to, I refuse to, Austin, Dallas, I did all of those places. Uh, yeah, and, uh, San, San Juan, and has, uh, three positions, I am all San Juan from, to that degree. And my now husband had one of them.
Uh.
So, like, well, I, I didn't work for, for a while, you know, just, uh, just a re- regular.
Sure.
You know, I don't fuck with it, um, and then I ended up in the president, I think, nothing many years, but my present, at the time, worked for the city. In San Juan, and so he's in here.
Okay.
And he goes and go along with me, but so he came and checked on me, and I'm like, yeah, so he, he went along, he was like, what you doing? He was really kind of, he's like, hey, he's like, you have a full degree, four year, eighty-seven credit, big program.
It's full music.
And you remain in that normal way, working my way, it does not, so are you there?
All right.
Like.
That ain't very good.
Come on. Like, you, you got to get a bigger one, look at that school, area, if you're lucky, you can stay as long as you want to, but you got, that, do you sound that? Then you go next.
Well, I tell people, I tell, you said that you got, and I go, I tell people this too, when we're talking about, down, uh, uh, land is changing, the rivers, and. That the farms are changing, and I say, folks, our generation, we did it, these things. We told our children, you don't wanna do what we do, so we get educated and be, and do other things. So we did, I mean, I do have to compare it, so, because I said the same thing, don't do this, you don't wanna do what I do, you don't wanna do this, uh, and, and, so. And I'm relating to what some of these stuff is, so, so, as people become, as, as generations become more educated and more career oriented. They, they. But, pardon, they, they lost, they don't have emotional tide of things that we did, it's a different generation, so. When you look at stuff, and you're saying, how come young people like this, I say, because we did it, we, we wanted them to succeed. And we still did, no kidding, mom, it, but it's, 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 so, when you say what your dad said, I, I know what that is.
Yes.
I know exactly, I can relate exactly to that.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, my son, I work with city, it's a, you know, we're in trenches out there, it's, if you get, we're gonna quit. And my, I'm a saint, can you say that? How can you let people talk to you like that, and you beat them back, and they're actually a second hand, and it happens? Also because of people, it's okay, you gotta roll with it, you gotta forgive, never forget, and understand something, you're, you keep, you didn't need that. Like, go out and do other things, you don't need to do that. So I can relate, so, for, for you. For you. Uh, come on, folks, I wouldn't have thought this to take that long, but, 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 it's only six.
I would never, I think, then.
And, and that's, that's, we better down.
Yeah, it's more than that.
Well, what's frustrating is, in Maroon, they don't say origin for this one, and we are wondering this one, and we need next one.
And then they say, so that's special, we need next one, to go over all the C I P projects.
Is that not, that's next Tuesday?
Yes.
Is it?
You have it.
Is it the twentieth, or one thirty P M?
I'll be back.
Okay, because I have a mic, I'm gonna be there.
I'll see you next week.
I'm just very interested in the C I P stuff. So, I, you know, like you're putting, I think, gone to the city, April, March thirty-first, or two thousand eight, it's already five, so. It's been six years, and it's amazing, because a lot of stuff is, not a lot changed, uh, capital. You know, the capital, almost a hundred, all the, so, and whatever, the one thing, so. When I started, I started with the city, because I had five calls, I had a board of eight, and so, like, I, I was in charge of the line, two years after I came. I had a work ethic, and so like, I, I was in charge of the right, two years after I came. And I worked on my things, tools. But uh, it's amazing because I got, I got into this one. And people called and they said, well, I don't work there. First, I said, I don't know how they changed this. Then, and then I get a call, somebody else says, sir, you want this way, this way, this way, you do this. And I'm like, oh, it's still the same. Isn't that right?
Yeah.
Uh, but it's, it's a. But. But working these two, I'm just a worker. I am indeed, that's why there's a tax law association, so you have to listen to this. Get around that too. But I told, I had me. I had me, but uh, I didn't really do, I didn't have a, and uh, to do, to do. I'm first, this is what I know. Uh, so when I say, well, I, I, I didn't even really come, now you, I said, oh, but we tell you all. Just so you know, because we talked to you with, with, the work she had this morning. I said to, I, I. Oh, and I, you understand this, it's the law, practice law, you know, always. I said, I'll let you know, I can do the same on both cheek. Same conclusion. I just, but, but I don't practice law, cause we, we don't practice law, we don't like it. So, 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 can we explain it?
Yeah.
Because I'm the. I said, yeah, man, as far as engineering, engineers sort of value both ways. They're awesome. Y'all folks just sit there and all those pretty pictures, and you, people like me, they're the worst. She was, wow. You just, you just undercut that, that engineering degree that I worked so hard to get. I said, no, I didn't. Yeah, the value of it is. I said, but you have, you have to, you can understand, but tell me. Because if you don't, then I don't know, just tell you. So, I, I usually tell the city, just, just. I'm here to see, well, your boss and engineers and attorneys, you have a, you have a. Your job is to help me. If I'm right, that may not, if I'm wrong, then give me that, and then that. And we're good, and we're good. That, that's just. Uh, you're, 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 you're my support. And then, and I get tired of talking, then I push you off.
And also it's supposed to work, I think you can, you can.
It's work together.
Yeah.
You know?
Time is speaking.
Yes, work together with you. But uh, but, but keep. I'm a little suction. But I, I, I don't know. I've watched people with capital. Or John Dohm, that's. But before that, we were the head of the, of the, of the, head of history. And they, they. They were more book smart, than I can tell smart. So it's easy to sit there and tell things that. There's a difference in top of somebody that's done. And uh, you're not. You're a sage.
My uh, my dad was a, my dad was trained like an engineer.
Sure, sure.
Well, going from. We're all set, not the same, like we. This, he said, he keep, like, he's like, this is a cubic foot.
Yes.
Realize what that actually looks like.
Yes.
This is a cubic one.
That's a big one.
This is a square foot, that's how it is.
Yes, yes, yes.
This is a cubic foot. Like, and he, and, you know, just, then the thing, like, he, he. The engineer goes, try to come on, like, well, how do you do that number? He's like, it's a constant.
Yeah.
Like, this is a number, but you know, if this is.
It's a number that's in brand.
More like like this, and you get what you need. And he's like, well, you have to do this way, and so they do that, and it comes up the same.
Go ahead, go ahead.
All of the, the standard numbers all end up at this number.
But I, you work in private, you learn, you learn over time.
Yes.
It's that, you, do whatever you want to do, this is it.
Yes.
Too short, that's it.
I always kill those, so, so. I, I, I take pretty value from the things that contractors and people, and construction workers, and that, you know, they're out there.
I mean, this is just boots on the ground.
Yeah.
They're not always right, but there's a lot of institutional knowledge you learn. And if you, if you're open to that, at least open to, okay, well. And you want to waste it, well, I call P S on that, oh, oh, that was pretty good.
Right.
You, you learn to figure that out.
And helps you see things differently, there's different ways to approach problems, and it helps you see the other side.
Well, I have a, an average year that was a, uh, worked for a while. Well, the staff engineer, well, the city's not responsible. And then he came out and, and tried to apply what he needed, staff engineer to a leader. And I said, now take that staff engineer, take back because you're entrenched and you're sort of. Hello? It's my wife, and I. Okay. What? I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm very, I'm very, you're starting to be. She's in this area.
These are spoken. A spokesperson, like, or, like. A spokesperson, she, she drives it.
So we're living a little.
It's small, it's real.
What?
So.
So it's for you, but it's for her?
It's for me.
I had a lady come the other day, almost a night ago. She was driving from Alaska to Chicago, she had a lady working, working, she was about two hours.
No.
I thought you were watching.
Yeah, you were, you were, you were done.
That's fast.
You were done.
What's, what is it?
I'm dead.
This is mine.
You know, that's a, you got to stay, that's how, yeah, it's all, it's all.
I'm out after her.
I can't.
Probably her mind. She's not fine.
No, no, no. Maybe she's not fine yet.
That's too funny. It's a small world, it's not that big, you know, a little bit smaller too. That's what I'm kind of.
It's okay. Yeah. Absolutely.
Yeah, oh. Some each other, huh? That's cool.
Yeah, cause when you, when you come up, up in New York, you see some of the proposals, you see the videos, that's like, um. Ex- experimental tech, well, there's a lot of that, there's some, you come down to, actually, you're talking. You know, who's the person, who's gonna be, you can break me in front of, but who's gonna be the actual?
Yeah, the person, the action.
The person, the action, that's the one, that's the one I wanna see in there. I wanna talk to that to see if there's a personality, if it works, if there's a lot of, um, and, and, and the general understand how things work. Uh, I, I, even with, with firms, and I can say it, but sometimes I'm, I'm not, I don't say this, right? So, you know, please, okay, I don't wanna talk to anybody, but if you wanna value your leadership, do not say that. If somebody else talks, you know, it's all, it's all, but it's okay, it's okay. Um, then you go through the studies and this stuff, and you're like, if you become, if you become trusty, and sometimes too trusty, you get caught up in the studies and, and, you know. We got, we have an elevator tank years ago, and we have another elevator tank, so we do a bigger elevator tank next to it. And you got, it's amazing, the bottom of the tanks is saying, it talks to you, the tech, oh, the tanks are different. So the new tank, as long as I have a old tank, I need, I need a third of it because somebody didn't want the information, so we're all waiting for it. And I said, well, wait, so you did, actually, up the elevations, or you, you work on paper, so then I said, so, what do you, what, I said, do you give, use GPS, Google Maps, to know where the ground elevator station is?
Right on.
Yeah, because something, if you know Google Maps, you can use the GPS point right there, um, at this point. So that was a, we done, and six months later, we did the same thing on the ground, so. We made young ground soldiers. Not they either can't eat it, because they all froze the other tanks on the side, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that's, it is what it is. So you put all of them.
That's sad, but.
No, things like that happen.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but, but.
Unfortunately, it's been a book.
Well, unfortunately, well, what happens with things like that happen? If those two guys can trust and verify, and if somebody doesn't verify, he can cancel things. Things happen, but.
That's expensive.
That's okay. It's okay. We're going through processes, like, I don't know. All right, damn, damn. It's like. That was a disaster. It's really sweet. The water, when you got, when you got the professional, the town is not, water system, city's that one. Has that, well, the water system has to be, so, you can count, except, maybe it was forty percent. And, and, I shared with eight other water systems, what's this, okay, my system, check it out. One more look, and he says, what's a catch? I says, no catch. It's just, they're linked to the company, it's for water. So then later, water problem, it gets done, and then they turn around, says, okay, we should, thank you so much. Go on, try one. So now it's, everybody, everyone before, that's how, I don't, I don't. Back and have a work, and I tried to, to, uh, all the, these, all the, all the train, and, and, uh, out of, he gave this, 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 very, very, very. And then, it's a temple, he got, he got, he made short list for about twenty-two, we got off the buses. Or, or, two more. What, I said, look, I'm, I'm, it's a rivers. And I lost, I said, look, the water, it makes, has, has, it's, it's. It's not, it's, it's, that's, that's, as soon as, as soon as, as soon as, first, he had this thought. I said, I'm gonna tell you, no, you probably didn't. And when you tell you, no, you probably, and, and, and personally, you keep going, until, why would you just break through it? But, well, well, your water system, you know, it's, 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 it's. So, well, you're, I think that's what I'm saying, but I was telling him, that was, it's, it's.
That's what I'm saying.
And then, it's, 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 it's. So, sort of, over, the, 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 the. It can't appreciate us, it can't appreciate us, it creates a lot.
It should, it should. Is it water?
Yeah.
You know, I brought two, uh, today. Two folks that said they, they're not selling anything. They're salespeople. Everybody's selling out because people are selling like that. Because people are selling up the cattle because you got to.
It's that.
Oh, yeah.
Well, see, what's gonna happen is it'll have to trickle back. It just gone a little cattle in the market.
And we president.
Yeah. Be perfect to the mind. It's one of those. There's no grass or anything for it, so now eat a minute. So it's. So, I mean, well, it'll be okay, it's just. Somebody told me that I heard he took, you know, this and two. I'm wrong.
We're going there together.
What do we, yeah, what do we think about the government just well, and say, well, my destination is, when he, uh, people like this, he got fifteen inch training, right spot, all of that, another fifteen inch training, and he's down eighteen inch. And I leaned over, I said, how do I probably get here, or keep down the tree, and then fifteen inch training twenty-four hours, build over the phone delay, and they go, bad. Yes.
When you have the lead.
Two thousand two, four in July. Four in July.
It thought it was gonna turn over and then four in July.
It, it.
The thing that we have.
It came, it came, it came to this city, it followed, I mean, in nineteen oh three, it cut across the city in two thousand two.
Our family's, our family was destroyed in the floodwater travel. And the travel, that's why our families told us to do it.
I don't know.
It's like.
I worked in that one. He went across highway nine, four blocks wide, four blocks wide. It, uh, highway nine, it was a bad.
Don't talk about people telling where it's gonna flood and going and playing.
Work, yeah.
San Antonio says, oh, the dam's gonna break, the dam's gonna break, everybody has to. Not this year.
The, uh, the bridge, the expansion. Hold your hand up there, and he's a veteran. That's how highway water was.
About eighteen inches, pull over. That was about eighteen.
That was crazy, that's.
Yes. That was the way.
Oh, yeah.
You know.
That was so cool.
We had the.
Roy. My anger is.
So we had friends up there that had daughter's clothes and they rested, couldn't get out, we couldn't get out, and what was the time you could get out?
You're being slutty, father.
I had a dog.
And they went raw our clothes and shit.
Yeah, you know, I, I, and if you found, look, like, they look into a flood, I mean, built that. I used to, and this is just personal, I used to look at, like, you see like. Yeah, I'll listen now, check with them. So, my office, we had eighteen years more in office. Um, I, I use, serious, left, uh, back, orange, yellow, there's air quarters, there's stuff on bottom shelf, and then. But your pictures on the top shelf, we're trying to get it. So I turned around, I said, remember, question, somebody else will put it in. I took this stuff off the top. Everything down, this is. Something, but it's, but yeah. Well, no, no, it was a fun time, they evacuated, did they ever come back, did they try to evacuate here?
True. You worked there, right, you was working there.
Yeah.
I took your money, so happy to. Let's get her.
All right, I know, here.
Always for both of us.
Wow.
It's thank you, we had to go such a good.
But the one they do, the man's house, the man's house, and then, and the whole bottoms, and they did the waters up. We knew it to the ceiling and that's. And that.
I had to, yeah, I brought across the island, that's the walkout, and across the river, and two waterways, two eighty stoppage, just one, a worship mound. That's what it was something.
Yeah, more people standing on the bridge, looking at the flood, and out in the rain, and they, they never seen it came over, and out of the flood.
We're saying swans, and then.
Yeah.
As they mark in, turn around.
The Texas office.
Yeah.
Was it a water?
That, that's the base, and then, and then.
But it followed a hundred five, but it's here.
Well. Oh, I could tell you exactly which houses would go out, and it's exactly like.
It did.
I didn't know why. Family was calling us, I didn't know that, that he lived there. There was, there was no sheen of place, so it flooded out, and he was going to wear something, and I don't think.
And then we. Well, what happened is, and then what, well, ruined that, because I love you. Techston builds dams, just like, we're building dams, so, highway ninety services, uh, built up, or had. Well, Houston Street is the original highway, was built in the nineteen twenties. Okay, so it's the first one, and concrete structures, color, but you're still there, it functioned already big. But highway hen was the bigger one, so it had to back down, then my boy, um, able to, until it crossed over, it crossed over about four, four blocks wide, he pulled across the highway. And he, it's got on the other side, it followed exactly. Right, it's bobby.
Yeah, right, all, right, all that.
Right, it's natural.
Because we were, we were sent from here, we were, we were right on the.
Oh, you even know that.
Yeah, born.
Right.
A little bit, yeah.
That was spooky.
Yeah.
That's awesome, yeah.
Yeah, well, also both said, but there was.
Oh, Lord, goodness. It's gonna wash away, a sixty foot wall, water's gonna hit it fast, we don't have.
If the can put, we'll see, if the can put it out.
That's a crack.
We would, we would, we already had a job in it before the post offices, we had four feet of water in the post office. That's how wide it would go, and how high it would go. But, obviously, that's just a, shoo, flow of water, so it can get everything out. The way it was, I think there was like, I think there was current eighty houses that had a ten, uh, water.
Well, look at can play, you know, when it, when it, when it overflowed of the stone line, I know about that was gonna happen. And it, it created a whole new doors.
Yeah.
Walked out.
Well, somebody asked me, I said, I said, really, if you had, I hope it's part of money. You take right there, at, uh, Mexico Street, and you, you like, San Antonio out of all this park, and you tunnel it all the way down to Vision Park. And just, because that's all the water, you have to cut right through there, so that you can protect this horse you did, give it an alternative path. That's again, the way, San Antonio's done that at all this park, or the underground tunnel system, where they used to, to get it away.
They got the, the mold of it.
Yes, if you did the same thing here, you'd never, you wouldn't have to worry about it, you know, because you have, you have. Always a place, as well. But I mean, but, you know, you, those are some of the things that, when people ask me, says, well, if money's the problem, this is the thing you can do. And you always try to express on that. It is what it is. But it followed that, but we should, we have, I'm still living there, and, and, and we're really a photo, and, and, uh, there, you can see the path. I see the trees, and that picture was taken. And you can see, but you can tell where the water, just by looking at it.
We're all meditation.
And it followed that.
Well, look at all the man, or you can see the man, or just look at it.
Well, you think like, Rush, or Rush Dope is, that was the name of the slum, but Roy's, the reason he's got deep ditched rather, he pulled the land in to build it up for his house.
Oh, okay.
Because the main, the main bridge, it's gone through, right through his property.
What did he do? I don't know.
Six, seven, it was there when I started this year, I started. So, seventy six, but I know, I, I hate to tell you that, it runs wrong there, that's why it's people around. But, uh, then Bob Lee, you know, Friday, the rain.
Yeah, he did.
Tell him.
And I don't know how that house, when you go around this, and then, and you, you turn to go to the house, it sits all the way down.
Jeff, Jeff's.
Jeff, yeah.
Get flooded.
Big time, it had.
Got water, definitely, actually.
I saw it pretty hot.
Yeah.
Yeah, it flooded.
Jeff too.
Yeah, it, it got flooded down there. See, you know, that's something, just park, 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 down there. Whatever.
But the little old houses that were built, still stand.
Yeah, they did. They did. What are they talking about?
I don't know, but we were gonna put, the Stomp House was supposed to go down, and it let the car.
It's the one.
It was supposed to go down, after, it had the far side of, uh, the guard room breach, that was the intention.
Oh, you mean, in the car.
In the car. But it flooded, but in ninety-six, there was a flood, what at mark, and it would have been like four feet underwater, four feet water, that's when it got moved.
Yeah, what we did, behind the Stomp House, the, the bridge, well, that's the original bridge, and the, the second bridge, the center lane, and the, or facing bridge, the age where it wiped. On the highway, the division, the bridge, but, so, well, this, that lot was all, that was the original park line, that was all drainage. Unburied underground piping, underground colors, and then they go past, or, or fix the drains there, so they can do what happens.
And they have a house room. Here, they, they're wearing the word.
I just don't wear it all that often. Is your zentix? No, that's. I, I just wear it for a lot of.
Thank you, guys.
Well, why do you put stuff?
On our computers, and our police officers, and the other ones.
So y'all are back?
We're back.
You sure you're back?
It's still early.
It's so early.
I know.
Where are just?
We don't wanna spoil you.
Why don't y'all put that at the very end, and not?
Cause they want.
Hey, if we gotta stay here, you gotta stay here, I'm just playing. Sorry. We normally, no, we normally try and do it like that.
I know, but you left that, talking about this.
And that's why Priscilla's here.
He's got the head on the lawn.
Yeah, yeah, we saw the water.
Wasn't there a big flood in, like, the seventies as well, after the big drought of the fifties? So we should just grin and brace ourselves now?
Was anybody alive then, looking at this?
Well, we, in the two thousands, uh, we had a huge flood that shut down ninety and everything.
Two thousand two.
Two thousand and two, yeah.
No, it was after that, because we didn't, uh, get PCS'd here until two thousand five.
Well, there was, the canal ruptured again, and that's why they closed out the second time. The first time was two thousand two during the big rain.
Yeah, we, we were up in Oklahoma then.
And then after that, it's because the canal broke.
Not a big flood.
That's the nice thing about living on, on, on hill, everything runs down.
You remember two thousand?
House, cause there's a dry feature there.
But it's where the canal broke.
And you can hear the, the drop, it had a waterfall.
Oh, wow, beautiful, that's a water feature, you know, Arnie, Arnie, uh, was told that. Turned out it was a broken pipe.
Yes. I remember that day, trust me.
That was funny.
All right, tell me when you're ready, Deborah.
You take longer than five minutes.
I'm ready.
Okay, we're gonna end session at, uh, seven seventeen. Uh, consider possible actions resulting from, associated and legally discussed in executive session, we have no items. Uh, next item is consider and take appropriate action to authorize staff to arrange for declaration of covenants, conditions, restrictions for all historic zone properties within the city of Casterville. For this, we have Councilmember Phil Keen.
Uh, I brought this because the, as you know, I liaised with the Historic Landmark Commission, and they asked me to, um, bring for council consideration. Kitchen tour, there, there was a way, um, to assist new property owners to understand that their properties are in a historic area and subject to the HLC regulations. Um, so he came and talked to HLC about that, and it's a simple process, um, all it says is, is that when someone buys a piece of property, um, then, um, it, in fact, uh, right now, the history, we need to talk around about this, because something changed here recently, but now for the ninety-seven, I mean, for the seventy-nine survey properties, they actually have a designation on them now, on the, uh, in the property tax records, um, the appraisal district. But, uh, this would go into these two overlay districts, and the attorneys, um, basically, and he gave an example of this document, but it's called a declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions, um, or whatever it comes out to be, but all it's, it's, if a subdivision is made out in the county, then this is a document that is given to the county. And it just, in the document, just lists by address, all the properties that this falls under. So here in town, you would take the overlay districts, the residential and the commercial, those specific individual properties, and it doesn't impose any more restrictions on them than what they are now. Um, but it does inform new property owners, when they buy the property, title, part of the title, is gonna be given to this, to them, and it then informs them, so. Because several times now, they've had people come before them and said, man, I didn't know this was a historic property, Sheena, on something you'd said, and this will inform them right away. So they know prior to them purchasing the property, that this, prior to them purchasing the property, they will be told by the title company that this is a protected property and needs to go before, any changes need to go before the HLC.
If it's in the public.
They can pull out.
Right.
If it's in the public records, the title researcher will pull it up.
Yeah.
Yes, when the title company pulls it all up, that's who knows.
Bruce, I'll, I'll acknowledge you in a second, give me a second, all right?
So that's all, this is just a simple document that, that says that, because we've, you know, within the last year, we've, we've talked about this on council, how do we do this? Do we inform all the realtors in town, what do you do? This is the simplest process, and Tim Hart recommended it, and he says it's been, this is not new, this is what people do, and it just simply informs them, you're in this district, and that's it.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, I'll continue a second.
Does this, I have a home in that district, in the overlay, so are you saying you're going to put a lien on my house?
It has nothing to do with a lien.
Does it call the lien?
It's not called a lien.
Does it, does it give anybody legal rights to do something to my house?
It gives nobody legal rights to do anything to your house, it does inform you, if you sold your property to someone else, it would, that document would be, said that this property is part of an historic overlay district, and changes to it need to go before the HLC ordinance, that's all it would do.
It's the same thing an HOA would do, if there's an HOA, and all of this new stuff getting built out here, that HOA has the same kind of documents with the county, from my understanding, that if somebody's gonna purchase that, it's gonna show that it's an HOA to cover the property.
Right, Bruce, you had a question, comment?
My, my own question, I think you started the answer, it would, it would be applicable to every property within historic district.
Right, so basically, we've had this, yeah, that's exactly what it is, we have the, uh, and I know that there's still not a full agreement on what that looks like, but whatever is in our historic district, it will go on record with the county, so if somebody ever sold it, they would have no question, this is within here, here are your instructions, I had to do the same thing, because I've got a cemetery on my property, and, uh, and Charlie Boy had put a, a restriction on there, and said, you have to sign off on this, and we had to agree to it, and, uh, it just informs people.
Yeah, I, I got it, and just, just to reconfirm that every, every property within historic district is subject to HLC.
In the historic residential, in the historic commercial, and in the seventy, the houses in the seventy-nine survey, because some of those are outside of that, but those are the ones that, according to the ordinance that was signed in two thousand seventeen.
The zoning district of the historic, or residential, commercial, and if you see anything else that's outside of.
In the zoning district, yes.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And they, and they all go into one document as one entire list, instead of going through, I was concerned, because I thought we were gonna have to go through and, and, uh, deal with every single property, property separately, but this gives them the entire list. Whatever that list ends up being, by the time that we might adopt this, it would go in there as that list, it's on file with the county, it's a very straightforward thing. I know that there was a property right over here, uh, that was on the historic, the sixty-nine survey, that was subject to that, and they were told when they bought it, no, it's not subject to that. So they bought it, thinking that that's the way that it was, and then they made modifications.
Not just that one.
Yeah.
Cause we have so many outside realtors now, you know, twenty years ago, you only had three or four.
Right, they either don't know, or they're.
Are they okay?
They don't care, and they will actually hide that.
And, and I would like, uh, this list to be given to Brianna and them for when permits come along.
Yep.
And they can see automatically.
Well, they are actually already, that's covered, but then by then, it's too late, because people have already bought.
Yeah, we generally use our GIS for that function, but I wanna clarify, because I, the way I understand the recording process to be at the county, and Deborah, you might know a little more about this. So we would provide them a list of all the addresses, but you would still have to record, the county would then record that note on every single one of those properties individually.
That is.
So it would have to be recorded individually, because that's the only way it can be looked up, um, is when you look up that property, then they'd see, okay, there's a note here, and that's what the note is.
So right.
We would only have to file one.
This document would be filed with every one of the properties.
Right.
But we only file it one time.
Right, you, we'd file it, and the county would take care of that aspect of it.
And I would recommend not using addresses, because there are properties in the districts that are not addressed, so we wouldn't have numbers, but, but to use block and range, block and range, block and range, cause those are established and won't change.
Our attorney's taking notes, so he'll do that, if we vote.
Yes, you had something else?
I'd like to make a motion that we table this until we get some responses from our discussion we had in the executive session, because this, this is the same thing.
No, so I, uh, I would suggest that this is a policy, we're not applying it to anything right now, it is having, uh, because even if it comes out that, uh, it's determined that it's just the sixty, or the ninety-six, that are in the sixty-nine survey, I think that's funny, ninety-six and the sixty-nine, even if it's determined that that is, this, it's the same process to do that versus an extended district, so.
Scott just said that somebody's gonna come and put something on my record of my property that I never agreed to, and I don't understand.
Let's be clear.
How we can do this.
No, I, I get that, let's be clear on what's being asked, we are not asking to go and file with the county right now, the motion is not to go and file with the county right now. If that were the case, then I would totally agree, because that hasn't been fully worked out yet, we will work it out, but it hasn't been worked out, but the process, um, it would be to authorize staff to arrange for the declaration, uh, and of all of this stuff located within the city of Ca- Casterville, so we have the process together, we have the rules in place, we have it figured out with the county, so once we finally do that, it would be a separate process, and the attorney can tell us how to make sure that we word this, so that it comes back in front of council before we actually submit that with the full list of all of the properties on it.
So Mayor, you have a point of order, uh, Councilman Dyer has made a motion, you need to entertain it a second, and, or it dies.
Okay.
I will second that motion, I, I think we're a little premature on this section.
All right, discussion, discussion.
Um, again, this was brought from us from HLC, this is, the motion simply says that staff arrange with the attorney, the discussions about what actually is gonna be covered or not, that's just a list. Everything, all the other language of this remains the same, and it's already in place and ready to go, because they're so frustrated that people are coming to them, and they're not informed that these are historic properties. So if there's only ninety-six property addresses on it, or if there's four hundred of property addresses on it, that can be added later, and we don't have to first wait until we get feedback from the attorney on that issue. This thing here, they can already work on it, draft it up, and then all, based on council action, because we're, you know, this just authorized to do it, it doesn't say we're gonna approve it or not, that will be at a future, uh, council meeting, and at that point in time, we can, we can vote to say exactly what addresses go on it.
So then, rather than having block and range, it could be the HE district as designated by this map.
It could be, or it could have the ninety-six addresses, yeah.
So, so.
Or block and range.
So I agree, I agree with, uh, Herb and Paul, once again, we're gonna cause potential confusion, and I say that because if we just submit it for the ninety-six homes, and not the four hundred and some odd, at the begin, at the, right off the bat, some people are gonna be thinking, oh, I'm not one of those exceptions, so I can do something to my property.
I'm not saying we do that.
Well, but if we submit that to the county right now, just for the ninety-six.
I'm not saying that, the motion doesn't say that.
Let's back up again and talk about, um.
I authorize staff.
I, what we're talking about is authorizing, if you start the process now, and you get it figured out, and you don't approve the final list, you make sure that that final list comes in front of council, because that is gonna be something, that is a politis, policy decision that needs to come in front of council, but if we wait on them even figuring out how to do it, and working through all the details, so it can come back, then all you're doing is delaying, and every time you delay, you potentially have one more property that you lose, or one more potential lawsuit, you have one more thing that comes in front of HLC, so, uh, my recommendation would be, get the process done. Understand what it looks like, and then apply it once it gets to that point, if you don't wanna do that, then we're gonna sit on our hands and wait unnecessarily.
I have an analogy that I think fits, I mean, you got a couple that's trying to decide if they wanna have a baby, and they say, well, let's get started now, and then we'll decide in seven months whether we really wanna have it or not. Well, and I think that's what we're doing here, and I think it's wrong, that's why I proposed to be tabled.
Well, and, and again, Herb, I think, from an analogy, we're gonna have to have a document like this anyway, there has to be a document this, it's the only thing that makes sense, HLC has proven, I think we all agree that we need the document. So let the attorney go ahead and work up the draft and bring back to us, and by that time, at, you know, we will know how many addresses we put on it, and that will go into the final document, no matter which way we go, we have to have the document developed, the big question is, what addresses go on it, and that can be.
We should answer the question, which addresses are gonna be on the document, before we have the document written, and we have a fundamental disagreement between me and others about whether it should be the, the original historical homes, which I would support, or all the homes, which I don't support, and that's the issue.
Okay, how about this, to make it, well, let me make one, let's go ahead and have the attorney put in on the draft document, the ninety-six homes, realizing that, in the draft document, and if we find out that it is the four hundred homes, then at that future council meeting, we will vote to change them.
Can I make another recommendation, and give another analogy that is more appropriate to this discussion? Have you ever taken a fill-in-the-blank test?
What?
A fill-in-the-blank test.
Yes.
You get a test, and it's got a fill-in-the-blank, they construct the test, they decide what needs to be on there, and they say, these are the things that you're gonna have to fill in, we have set what is gonna be on the test, what we're asking for, and any standard form, an SF form that comes out, the form is standardized, so what we're looking at doing is developing the form, the content that goes into that, just like when you go through a test, and you put on your answers, or when you fill out an SF, whatever, the standard form, you fill it out with the details that are appropriate, so what we're talking about is developing the form, not the content, not the, the fill-in-the-blank, not the variables. The variables are what we need to decide separately, but we're saying, let's develop the form and add the variables once it's time, we need to have that form in place anyway, if we're gonna protect. We need to have that form in place anyway, if we're gonna protect anything. If you're saying we should protect nothing, then go on with the, uh, thing and approve this. If you believe that we should protect something, then let's get that form together and not approve the content that goes into it until it's time.
But the agenda item reads, all historic zoned properties within the city of Castroville.
So change the wording so that it fits that, where you're filling, you're completing the form, getting ready to fill it in, and it comes back to council before you fill it in. Would you be open to modifying your motion to include that? Okay. I have a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Wait, and what's the motion?
Table it.
Table it.
Okay.
Okay, I, uh, all opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so I, Miss, I heard one aye. Do we have undecided?
I'm gonna go ahead and vote to oppose it because I want to, uh, support the idea of preparing a document that has the ninety six homes on it. So I will vote nay.
I'm just concerned of pre-doing it and amending it might fall by the wayside. So I'm also for, um, tabling it for right now.
Okay, we have a tie vote.
That's three to one.
No, it's three to one.
Three to one? Uh, I'm sorry, did you vote to table it?
Table it, yeah.
That's a, that's an aye vote.
It's a tie vote.
Two opposed vote and aye vote.
It's two ayes and two opposed. You make the.
Now we had.
Aye.
There's three ayes and one.
No, Paul opposed it. Paul opposed a motion.
I, I voted, I voted to table.
I'm sorry, I thought you meant you voted to table it.
Yeah, he voted to table it.
I'm sorry.
So that's an aye vote.
He made the second.
I'm sorry, no, I, I, I voted to, to deny the, the motion. Sorry.
Okay.
So.
Two to two.
Two to two.
So it's two to two.
So I, I'm.
So you made the second, but now you're changing.
We changed, we changed the parameter. We've changed the parameter of the motion, of the, uh, agenda item.
Okay, so we have two and two.
Right.
Okay, so does it die with that, or do I need to, to make a vote?
That was, that was just, well, you, we, there can be another motion.
It honestly.
Break the tie.
Uh, you can break the tie, but also understand that all that does is, then the item's not tabled, then you can seek another motion to authorize staff to do what has been proposed.
Right.
Okay. So then let's, let's talk this out. Um, I think that, I think that it would be a mistake to put the ninety six on there. I think it's a mistake to put any of the variable content in there now. You get the constant contact, content. You get the form of it. You get the standard form put there without putting a single property in there. And that way, we can deal with the disagreement. Once we're ready to implement, then we fill that in. Would you be willing to modify the motion to do that?
No. There's no motion.
No, there's no one.
Well, we haven't.
Yeah, that's just, right now, it's just a table. So what I would recommend.
It's not a tabled item, it's a tied item.
No, I understand. But the motion was to table the item. So I would recommend that you cast a tie vote, which would either aye or nay.